Okay, let's find our seats. Welcome to night three of Arlington's 2024 Annual Town Meeting. Okay, let's settle down, everyone. It's quiet down. I have some notes regarding scheduling to start. Tonight, we will jump ahead to Article 45 with the meeting's permission, the Minuteman High School budget, because we have to schedule the superintendent's visit in advance. Then, we will resume where we left off Monday with Article 16. Next Monday, May 6th, will be Town Budgets Night. We will start with Article 39, continue to Article 40 for the capital budget, and then resume wherever we leave off tonight. We schedule that night because we invite all the department heads to answer your questions on various budgets. Next Wednesday, May 8th, will be the opening of the special town meeting with its five articles. The Select Board is not expected to have its report available for the special town meeting until early next week, perhaps on Tuesday. That gives very little time for you all to review the report, and we're going to do two things to address the compressed timeframe. First, the Select Board voted tonight on Article 5 from the special town meeting warrant to not provide a recommended vote. So, priority will pass to the petitioner who's working with a town meeting member to make the main motion under that article, and that is already underway. The Select Board will still have the opportunity to change their decision on any of the articles in the special town meeting warrant until they issue the report officially, but will operate under the assumption that their decision tonight will stand, and we can course correct if that changes, we can course correct the town meeting. So, if you have amendments, substitute motions, or materials to share for any articles in the special town meeting warrant, including Article 5, the resolution, contact me in advance. You can find my contact info on the official town meeting page. The second thing we'll do to address the compressed timeframe between the issuing of the Select Board's report and the start of special town meeting is that on next Wednesday, immediately following Article 1 of the special town meeting to receive reports of committees, anyone who feels that there's insufficient time to prepare is free to make a motion to adjourn the special town meeting until the following week, and at that point, we would resume the annual town meeting if that passes. So, if such a motion is moved and seconded, it will be decided by Town Meeting whether to continue with the five articles of the special town meeting on May 8th or take more time to prepare. So, power to the people, even if that means a little less predictability. Just a reminder that I sent an announcement to the TMM email list on April 19th that will be following the same practice for resolutions as we did at last year's town meeting. That affects Article 5 of the special town meeting warrant and Article 66 of the annual town meeting. There will be one proponent speaking for and one opponent speaking against, plus proponents of any substantial subsidiary motions that I've approved in advance. That means no live speaker queue. Priority will be given to the petitioner of the resolution in selecting the proponent who speaks in favor, and as we mentioned, if the Select Board's vote tonight stands, then a main motion could be made by a town meeting member working with the petitioner of that resolution. Anyone interested in submitting an amendment or substitute motion for special town meeting Article 5 must get those to me for review as soon as possible. If I don't receive your motion before this weekend, it's highly unlikely that it will be approved in time for next Wednesday's special town meeting, assuming it doesn't get delayed through adjournment. You can find my contact info again on the official town meeting page. Lastly, seats for the next speaker in the front row have been reserved with pink signage. It says "reserved for next speaker." That's the on-deck circle, but instead of a circle, it's four discontinuous chairs. And so, when I call the second speaker, please try to find your way, if you're on the floor of the auditorium, please find your way up to one of those chairs. There's two here and two over there, so that you're ready to hop up to a podium when it's your turn, and it'll save us some time. And with that... Well, there's no order here. It's just remarks, but... Point of order?
I think this is a point of order, at least I hope it is. You have explained how the speaker who speaks, the proponent of a resolution, will be selected, but how will the speaker speaking against the resolution be selected?
At the moderator's discretion.
Thank you.
It hasn't been formalized. It's something that will, I think, be reviewed at some point by the Town Meeting Procedures Committee, but has not been codified. We actually haven't had enough speakers in the past to warrant a whole process for it. We'll see if that changes this time. Thank you. And with that, please all rise for the National Anthem. Thank you, Mr. Helmut. Mr. DeCorsi?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It is moved that if all the business of the meeting is set forth in the warrant for the annual town meeting is not disposed of at this session, when the meeting adjourns, it adjourns to Monday, May 6th, at 8:00 p.m.
Okay, we have a second to Mr. DeCorsi's motion. All those in favor of adjourning to Monday, May 6th, at 8:00 p.m., if we don't finish tonight, we're not going to finish tonight. All those in favor say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed? It's unanimous. The point of order? Does someone have number 200 handset? Please check your handsets to see if you have number 200. If you do, you've probably stolen it from someone else, and you can find that person in the back. We have a winner. Okay, we'll now take a test vote. I didn't come up with tonight's vote, so we'll see what we get. Will the Bruins win the Stanley Cup? I think that's hockey? And it passes. The Bruins win the Stanley Cup. Yeah, can we show the votes? Thank you. And as we're going through the votes, are there any announcements and resolutions? And if we have more than one, you can line up in one of these aisles here. Yeah, we have an announcement here?
Nancy Bloom, Precinct 18. I just want to make an announcement. There'll be a community barn dance at St. John's Episcopal on Pleasant Street on Sunday, May 19th, from 3:00 to 5:00. Everyone is welcome, all ages, all kinds of people, small, tall, anything in between. And they're hoping there'll be a band. If you haven't known anybody who wants to sit in with the band, there'll be music there as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ms. Bloom. And any other... I believe there's a flyer in the back, I think. Is there any other announcements or resolutions on the side here?
Dave Levy, Precinct 18. Tomorrow night at 7:00, there's a virtual public forum run by the Arlington Conservation Commission. They'll discuss the future of the athletic fields at Arlington High School. And of course, it's going to have everyone's favorite topic: turf. So, if you're a proponent or not, this will be an interesting debate for sure, but you should let your voice be heard either at the forum or in advance. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Levy. Any other announcements or resolutions from the balcony, from the satellite room? Seeing none. Are there any reports of committees? Yes, Mr. Revellak.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Steve Revellak, member of the Arlington...
Oh, I'm sorry, one second. We don't have Article 3 before us yet. I jumped in. Ms. Derschler? My mistake.
Christine Derschler, Chair of the Finance Committee. I move that Article 3 be taken from the table.
Okay, we have a second to take Article 3 from the table. All those in favor say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed? It's unanimous. Mr. Revellak?
Steve Revellak, Member of the Arlington Redevelopment Board. I move that the Arlington Redevelopment Board's supplemental report to the 2024 Annual Town Meeting be received. This report contains a small change to the Board's recommended main motion for Article 28.
Okay, we have a second to receive the supplemental report of the Redevelopment Board. All those in favor say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Revellak. Are there any other reports? Mr. Schlickman?
Paul Schlickman, Chair of the Arlington School Committee. I will spare the speech because I have a little letter in here, but I move receipt of the fiscal year 25 Arlington Public Schools School Committee budget and report to Town Meeting.
Okay, we have a second. All those in favor of receiving Mr. Schlickman's report say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Any other reports of committees? Ms. Gruber and Mr. Bagnall.
Sure, I'll start. Alex Bagnall, Precinct 10. Do we have some slides? Somewhere. Anyway, Mr. Moderator, I move the report of the Hybrid Town Meeting Study Committee be received by Town Meeting.
Okay, we have a second. All those in favor of receiving the report of the Hybrid Town Meeting Study Committee say yes. All those opposed? It's unanimous.
Okay. Alex Bagnall, Co-Chair of the Hybrid Town Meeting Study Committee. We were established, per the vote of this body, in the spring of 2023 with a charge of reviewing other towns' hybrid town meeting practices and technologies, including evaluating the legal landscape, policies, procedural, social, and access issues, and including the impact on community interest and serving in this body. We have started our business of evaluating and recommending potential technology approaches and also budgetary impacts. And then, as we get into implementation, we will support this implementation as required.
Next slide.
Next slide, please. We first convened in November of 2023. Been holding monthly meetings. To date, we have attended Lexington's Hybrid Town Meeting, where they are using our old frenemy, the portal. We will continue to follow up with questions, including meeting with Belmont, who are currently engaged in a hybrid town meeting process, and attending Burlington and Brookline Hybrid Town Meetings. We are also evaluating and keeping an eye on the pending legislation that is before the state legislature.
Next slide, please. We've also designed several surveys to assess opinions, concerns, and potential usage of remote town meeting access. Those surveys have gone to four groups: current town meeting members, former town meeting members, and past users of the town meeting remote room. Those surveys have fairly similar questions, and hopefully, most of you have received a link to those surveys as it pertains to you. We also have a survey that's going to the community at large. That survey can be found on our webpage on the town's website. Regarding the survey for current town meeting members, the link is there, and I believe the town clerk will resend the link tomorrow. If you've lost that email somewhere in your inbox, so far, about half of you have responded. I wouldn't say it's a context, but Precinct 16 has about 100% response, and a few other precincts have only a couple or so responses, and I won't name you and embarrass you all. Next slide, please. So, if it's determined that hybrid is a form of town meeting that we'd like to proceed with, right now, we don't have determination of what that timeframe might be. It's impacted by several criteria: the technology that we can select, budgetary and contractual issues that we may be under, and also changing potentially existing town bylaws. Finishing up, if you want to follow our work, you can go to our page on the town website. You're also welcome to attend our hybrid meetings. We meet most fourth Mondays of the month. Our website has agenda, minutes, and reports. And I also want to call out the work so far of our members besides Alex and myself as co-chairs, Carrie Fallon, Pete Gast, Guillermo Hamlin, Steve Storch, and we've been supported really well by Syed Kadir, who's a member of the town's IT department, the town clerk, Julie Brazil, and of course, the town moderator, Greg Christiana. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other reports of committees? Seeing none. Ms. Derschler?
I move that Article 3 be laid upon the table.
Okay, we have a second. All those in favor of laying Article 3 upon the table say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed? It's unanimous. The next article in our usual order would be Article 16. We have scheduled with the Minuteman School Superintendent to present Article 45 tonight. Ms. Derschler?
I move that the undisposed articles in the range 16 through 44 inclusive be laid upon the table.
Okay, we have a second to lay those articles upon the table. All those in favor say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed? It's unanimous. Article 45 is now before us. Mr. Tosti? Actually, before Mr. Tosti starts, can we just show the speaker queue and clear that so everyone knows that they can request to speak under Article 45?
Al Tosti, Precinct 17. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to ask for an additional five minutes for a total of 12 minutes to allow the superintendent to make a presentation.
Okay, do we have a second to... Okay, so for a total of 12 minutes, is that correct, Mr. Tosti?
That is correct.
Okay, we have a second. All those in favor of giving a total of 12 minutes speaking time, of five additional minutes, say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed? It's unanimous. You have 12 minutes.
Okay. This year, as a member of the Finance Committee, I was assigned to view the Minuteman budget. It's been a school I had a long-term interest in. For new members, Arlington has been an original member of Minuteman since the district was created almost 50 years ago and currently represents about a third of the district. The issue of Minuteman has never been about the quality of the education, but the cost. You may remember that last year, I handed out a spreadsheet which showed Minuteman's cost versus all the rest of the vocational schools in this state. The superintendent will respond to any concerns in that issue. Over the last two years, we've had two promises made by superintendents to the Finance Committee. Superintendent came, promised that the playing fields would be covered under their revolving fund, and after the first year, the members would not have to pay a penny. Then the superintendent left. The next year, the superintendent didn't know anything about that, but then he promised that any increase in state aid from the governor's proposed budget in January will be used to reduce local aid. Then that superintendent left. So, fortunately, the interim superintendent, Mr. Kevin Mahoney, was aware of both and carried both to fruition. And today, all the playing fields are paid for by the reserve revolving funds of the school, and all increased local aid will be used to reduce assessments. Finance Committee thanks him very much and for the school, and we recommend favorable action on this year's budget. First, very briefly, I just want to introduce Sarah Montague, who is the Arlington representative to the Minuteman School Committee. So, if you have any complaints at all, you go to her. If you have any compliments, you go to the superintendent. At least, that's the way I was explained. So, I'd like to introduce Kevin Mahoney, the interim superintendent for Minuteman School. Thank you.
And, Mr. Tosti, do you have a request to Superintendent Mahoney to speak?
Request permission for Superintendent Mahoney to speak to this body.
We have a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed? It's unanimous. Superintendent Mahoney, and also, just pause the timer for just a second. If anyone has clicker number 229, please return that to the back of the hall. It's someone else's. Superintendent Mahoney? Sorry for the interruption. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Mr. Tosti. I'm accompanied tonight by the school business manager, Nikki Andrade, who will be with me in case there are questions that we need to work through. As Mr. Tosti mentioned, my name is Kevin Mahoney. I'm serving as the interim superintendent, and I'll be leaving June 30th of this year. But we are anxious and looking forward to welcoming Heidi Driscoll, who will be taking over the position of Superintendent Director on July 1st. And we're all very much looking forward to her and her leadership taking Minuteman into the next chapter. So, I just want to thank Town Meeting for the opportunity to offer a few comments on our budget and assessment. And we'd like to make sure we answer all questions with the hope of receiving affirmative action by Town Meeting. Next slide, please. So, our overall operating budget that we're proposing for next fiscal year That's about just under 4% over fiscal year '24. Next slide, please. So, just breaking down that, when we look at just our operating recommendation, that's about $24,160,000, which is slightly under 3% for our operating side. Our capital recommendation is about $1660,000. That's up significantly in terms of a percent over fiscal '24. But the reason, the major reason for that is we've, over the last couple of years, have been setting aside about $500,000 in our capital stabilization fund to make sure that we continue to maintain the building that was supported by Arlington and the other member towns back about seven or eight years ago. It's been online now five years, which is, time flies from my perspective. And, you know, it's important that we move forward and maintain a capital stabilization fund that will be sufficient to meet future needs. So, we've jumped that up from $500,000 to $850,000. In addition, we do have a building that we've used for various purposes over the last number of years. We call it the East Building. It's been used as a childcare center. It's been used as a private elementary school. And we think there may be opportunities for Minuteman to use it in our daily operations, most notably for our animal science program. We currently have that in temporary space that's not in the main building. It's a relatively new program, being in its third year. And there may be opportunities through some type of a partnership or some type of enterprise to come in and collaborate with Minuteman and perhaps invest in that building for animal science clinic. Or there may be other opportunities that we're looking at. And those discussions are ongoing, but we want to make sure that Minuteman has the financial resources to be able to do that. With those comments, I want to make clear that at this point, in the short run, any renovation we do to that building would not necessarily translate into additional seats for in-district students. So... And then, on the building project, we're about $5.7 million, 1.36% over fiscal '24. All of our debt is issued on the school building project, and we would expect that to sort of stabilize moving forward. Next slide, please. As we talk about the assessments, our assessment is about $25.7 million, which is 0.82%. That's an unusually low assessment number. It's not one I would suggest people get accustomed to. I think there were some anomalies that happened in this fiscal year and next fiscal year that has artificially suppressed that number this year. One of the points that Mr. Tosti made about the school district offsetting the debt service associated with the athletic fields by using our revenue that we generate through the rental of the facilities was a first-year impact in this assessment. But now that that's going to be moving forward, that'll just be continued. But I think in year one, it had a bit of an impact. And I think that what we're going to see over time, and we'll demonstrate this in a few minutes, that out-of-district students' enrollment is reducing, which is a good sign in terms of getting more in-district students involved and opportunities for vocational technical education. But on the other hand, the revenue that's paid through that tuition has offset member town assessments, and we're going to see that diminish over time. So, when we talk about the assessment to Arlington, it's about $8.6 million. That's a decrease of about $370,000 over fiscal year '24. A lot of that's based on the enrollment trend. That's the number that we'll be asking for your affirmative action tonight. Next slide, please. Just a sort of a breakdown, high-level breakdown based upon the assessment components. The required minimum contribution is the larger number, $3.4 million. That's generally determined under the School Aid Chapter 70 formula. And just to point out, the building project, debt service line, it's second to last line, about $1.8 million. That was exempt from the tax levy through a debt exclusion override that was voted by the town. Next slide, please. We did meet back in early March with the Finance Committee, and it had a very productive and engaged discussion. Some of the drivers of our budget, when we look at the salary, is our collective bargaining agreement at 3.5% plus steps. We did reduce a couple of administrative positions, but we did bring back positions that we had to reduce due to COVID, a couple of aides and a co-op coordinator. We've seen our co-op placement rise substantially, which is also very good, a very positive step. We had, because of enrollment, we had to add an unbudgeted foreign language teacher this year. We were able to absorb that within the operating budget, and we're continuing that position. And our student activity as far as our athletic program is really incredibly high. And we're adding an athletic trainer to support, manage our program, and comply with our MIAA rules. A couple of... Next slide, please. Couple of other drivers is non-salaried. Transportation, utilities. We're able to level fund our health insurance because we had a better result this year, and we're focusing on cybersecurity. Next slide, please. As I mentioned before, we've invested in our capital stabilization account, the debt service we talked about with offsetting the fields, and we're making a little bit higher contribution to OPEB. Next slide, please. On our overall enrollment, you'll see that the red line... The blue line on the top is the overall enrollment. The red line is the in-district enrollment, and the green line is the out-of-district enrollment. And as you could see, going back over the last six years, we had about 234 non-member students. It's now 37. So, that corresponds with the reduction in the revenue we anticipate. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. This is just enrollment analysis by town. As you can see, Arlington has two, as of October 1, 215 students. We're anticipating for next year, we have 45 accepted students coming in, which will be a slight decrease to Arlington. And in our discussions with the Finance Committee, we did provide sort of a three-year forward-looking document. And if we tend to see that enrollment stay at that mid-40s level, we should not anticipate a lot of spikes in our, in our, the Arlington assessment, given those assumptions. Next slide, please. Again, these are some of the points that we talked about with the out-of-district tuition going down. That will have an impact on assessments. It's just sort of a forewarning because we're seeing those students that are currently enrolled, those numbers are starting to drop over the next couple of years. And I just wanted to make a couple of comments on the cost, the per-pupil cost for Minuteman. We had a discussion, again, with the Finance Committee and other, our other member towns, that Minuteman is the highest per-pupil cost vocational school in the state. A lot of the factors that are driving that are teacher salaries, competitive within member towns, our cost of special education. We have 40%, of students that receive services. And our transportation costs, due to the geographical location of the district, with the school being on the eastly side, our transportation costs are rather expensive. That concludes my comments. We would ask for your affirmative action on the assessment. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Mahoney. And also, I want to apologize to Mr. Toski and Superintendent Mahoney. The superintendent was already authorized to speak from the first night of Town Meeting, and so he's doubly authorized, but that doesn't give him twice the time. Okay. So we'll now turn over to the speaker queue, and we'll start out, again, with two speakers announced at a time. First, Mr. Benson, and then Mr. Ruderman. Mr. Ruderman, if you could find the seat with the pink signs, we'll call them the hot seats, maybe? We'll see if that works. Mr. Benson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everyone. You know, when Arlington looks at itself, we compare ourselves to a mix of other communities in many ways to see how we're doing. In this instance, I thought it would be interesting to compare how Minuteman is doing financially to the nearest Vo-Tech to it, Shawshin Valley Tech. Here's what I found comparing the budget we've seen tonight to Shawshin Valley Tech's budget. The cost per pupil for our town in this budget is $39,824 per year. The cost per pupil for Billarica, which is the largest contributor to Shawshin Valley Tech, is $23,700 per year. That's a difference of $16,124 per pupil per year. Arlington has 215 pupils at Minuteman Tech. Multiply that to the difference, and you get an additional amount that Arlington's paying compared to what Bill Ricker's paying per student of $3,466,660 per year. So it's not only the most expensive Vo-Tech school, it's by far much more expensive than Shawshin Valley, a nearby tech. So I have a few questions I'd like to ask Mr. Mahoney, if I might, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, please, Mr. Benson, go ahead.
Thank you. Is 686 students the maximum capacity at Minuteman?
It's slightly above maximum.
What has Minuteman done in the past couple of years to try to reduce its expenses?
The challenge that we have with reducing expenses is we do have increased enrollment, and we need to support that increased enrollment. I'm not sure about the source of your numbers, but if you're just simply taking the bottom line of assessments, I don't believe, and I could be wrong, but I don't believe that Shawshin's carrying debt service to the level that we're carrying debt service. And I think you alluded to like a $3 million variance, and if Shawshin is not carrying any debt service, 1.8 of it is related to the debt service that we talked about in the cost components. So without knowing the complete breakdown, I couldn't, I can't really respond to that. But we've been in an environment now where we're seeing enrollment increase. And in that type of environment, it's a little bit difficult to be trying to.
You didn't give us a breakout of the budget, so it was a little difficult to look behind these numbers and see what they were. I took a look at the breakout that Shawshin gives to its member communities, and there's much more detail, so it was much easier for me to look at that. So I would appreciate if next year, we get a better breakout of the budget. How much state aid does Minuteman get annually that goes into the budget?
And if you could just offer your name and title, please.
Do you have, oh, you, name and title, please.
Hi, I'm Nikki Andrade, the business manager at Minuteman.
Do you have, do you know how much?
Yeah, do you have an answer for Mr. Benson's question?
The Chapter 70 state aid was $2.9 million. And that's our estimate for FY '25 budget as well.
Is there any transportation aid from the state?
Yes, that's around $800,000.
Shawshin, by the way, gets $1 million per year in transportation aid and gets $6,706,000 per year in Chapter 78, significantly more than Minuteman gets. I don't have an explanation. I'm not sure what to do with this from here, other than I wanted to make sure everybody understood what the wide disparity is and to see if our representatives to Minuteman can take a look at, is there more that can be done? Because I don't question the great education that students get there. I just question the cost compared to a nearby competitor. Thank you.
Mr. Toski might have an answer to that question. Mr. Toski?
Just a couple of explanations. One is, Minuteman represents a much, much wealthier district than Shawshin. Shawshin's district is fairly middle-class when you throw in towns like Dover, Weston. Arlington's actually the, one of the poorest towns in Minuteman. And the state aid is largely based on, to a certain degree, on wealth. The wealthier your property tax base, the less state aid you're going to get. One of the other elements in comparison is, I can't remember the exact enrollment at Shawshin, but it's much bigger. You have a much smaller school, and with a larger school, you have certain benefits of size. So those are just two thoughts to keep in mind.
Thank you, Mr. Toski. Next up is Mr. Ruderman, and then after that, Mr. Stephen Moore. And also, I just want to ask, is there a microphone in the balcony? And if there isn't, can someone get a microphone up there? Okay, Mr. Ruderman, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Ruderman, Precinct 9. And speaking for myself and not for the Finance Committee, if we could return to the presentation that we just saw, could you bring up the slide again about the different trend lines in the enrollments, students coming from in-district towns versus students coming from out-of-district Well, I'll get started. I believe the numbers I saw were approximately a school year 2000, yes, 2016, 238 students from out-of-district, within reasonable approach of the number of students from in-district towns. This year, this year fall into 37. Mr. Mahoney, were any out-of-district students accepted for the incoming class in this last year of applications?
Right now, we received 175 in-district applications. All of those applications were accepted. A recommendation was made to the School Committee back in the fall to limit our accepted applications to 175. So it just happened to come in at that level at our initial acceptance. We've had about seven or eight of those students decline their acceptance. And as of this point, we, and we're following up on some late applications from in-district member-town students. In awaiting their decisions, we have not accepted any out-of-district students as of this time.
No acceptances for out-of-district students. I would consider this to be a promise fulfilled. Those of us who were part of the campaign to secure your agreement to the part of the debt for the new Minuteman school building, one of the, one of the arguments we made, in fact, one of the slogans we used, was give us a building that was worthy of the education happening inside, and we will fill it, we will fill it with students from our own district. And that has happened. Part of the increase in the member-town's assessments has been the increasing numbers of students from the member towns, and conversely, so many fewer students from out-of-districts that paid an increment above the tuition, which lessened the impact on the member-town's assessments. The new building is beautiful. If you've had an opportunity to see it, I know you'll agree with me. If you haven't, you are, I urge you and invite you to make an opportunity to get a look at it in action. I just have one more question. I'd like someone to speak to the outcomes. It's close enough now to the end of the school year. I think, I think you would have an idea, would you, where Minuteman students are headed next? And if you could give us a rough breakdown, please, of how many are continuing education, how many are, you know, going into more training in a vocation? Can you tell us about the outcomes, please?
I can, as far as students graduating this year, we haven't, I haven't reviewed the numbers yet, but if we look at it historically, between 60 and 65% of our students move on to two- and four-year colleges, continuing their majors. Another 30 or so percent will go right out into the trades with the certifications that they've earned as part of their education at Minuteman, and less than 5% may choose to go into the military.
Thank you. I, if you look at the range of shops, as they are called, courses of study, majors, concentrations that Minuteman offers, I believe that's another factor inherent in what it costs to run Minuteman, the great variety of programs and pursuits that the students have, you have the option of following. And I think there's a success story in that, in that so many of the students, within, within 1% or 2%, all of Minuteman's students will either be engaged in further education next year or actively pursuing the trade that they have been training for. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Great, thank you, Mr. Ruderman. We'll take Mr. Stephen Moore next, and then Mr. Kepline is on deck. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Moore, Precinct 18. I want to thank Mr. Ruderman for both of his points. Those were important and part of what I had for questions, so thank you. Following on his, some of his points regarding out-of-district members, other than in-district members taking the positions, the slots available, so to speak, has there been any additional analysis to why, or is that the reason for the drop in out-of-district membership? And secondly, if it's not, has there been analysis done as to why that number is decreasing?
It's related to building capacity, frankly. And it, it does suggest, at least in this moment in time, that the building was adequately sized to beat the population demand of our member towns.
Perfect, thank you. That's excellent, and just as Mr. Ruderman said, it's a promise fulfilled. Another question about the capital budget increase for the town of Arlington. I'm wondering if any of that increase is related to the fact it's a new building, or is it to do with the fields issue that Mr. Toski raised?
I think the debt service is specifically related to the building. The commitment at the time we sought the authorization for the bonding was the debt service related to the, the fields would be offset by revenue collected by the rentals of the facilities. In some cases, there are other costs that are covered by the renters, such as the lights that they use, the maintenance over time that's incurred, and some overhead costs. As far as the operating cost of the field, it's basically those costs that would be associated with whether we were running them or not, off-hours. So just, just the day-to-day maintenance of the field is included in the assessment.
Okay, so part of the increase in the capital assessment is related to the use from rentals and additional use? I'm not quite following, I guess.
No. I'm sorry, let me clarify. As far as the cost, any of the capital costs related to the field, there's no capital cost involved in the, related to the fields. Just on our operating costs, just some staffing that we dedicated to our outside maintenance, not the capital.
Okay, so related to the capital budget, the increase in the capital budget to the Arlington assessment, is that related to the cost related to the new building that perhaps were not projected correctly, or what? I guess I'm asking.
No. I think it's a combination of debt service, which we can predict from now to the rest of 25 years. And I did mention also that we increased our capital stabilization account from $500,000 a year to $850,000 to try and preserve the asset. And there are a couple of other very minor capital, annual capital costs that we include each year.
Okay, I think, I think we're just showing my ignorance here about what goes into those budgets. So thank you, that's helpful. And lastly, I'm aware of some of the issues related to the repeated turnover in superintendents. But I'm wondering, could you give me the dates for the turnover that Mr. Toski referenced for when we changed superintendents?
The only date I can give you, since I wasn't involved at the time, I was retired and I came back. So the only date I can give you is I started the end of May last year, and I'll be ending the end of June this year.
Okay, I understand. Again, I've been a little disconnected from the issue, so I think I understand what's happened. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Kepline, you're next, and then on deck is Mr. Andrew Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Kepline, Precinct 9. About, last year, about this time, was a lot of upheaval going with the superintendent of Minuteman. And I'm wondering if, what was the cost associated with a parachute to get her out of place and a new one in?
There was a settlement. It was about $216,000.
Okay, thank you. I also noted that you have a decrease in energy costs that you, and that's great. Arlington, FinCom mentioned our electricity cost is up 40%, and we're looking at higher energy prices or costs in Arlington. If you have any words of wisdom or how you're able to decrease your energy costs?
I wouldn't necessarily call them words of wisdom, however, I think that we tried to take advantage in building the new building to try to maximize use of solar technology. It helped with our LEEDs point, which helped reduce the, which increased the reimbursement from the state on the, for the building project, and it's also translated into a reduction in our operating costs.
Okay. Do you still use gas heat in the building?
Yes, we, it's partially gas and electric, yes.
All right. And can you give me a breakout on how much your total costs are on gas and how much electricity?
Yeah, it's about $500,000, $500,000.
Combined or each?
Yes, combined.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fisher's next, and then after that, on deck will be Ms. Dre. Are we getting, are we getting feedback through the, I assume I'm the only one hearing the feedback?
Yes.
Let's see. Let's see. Seems better now. I think there's someone in a room somewhere turning dials, so let's see if that works. Mr. Fisher?
Andrew Fisher, Precinct 6. I'm interested to know the status of the lawsuit that had to do with not admitting some students.
Sorry, the question was, a lawsuit involving what?
Maybe it's long past. The, Minuteman has a cutoff, I believe. What, put it this way, what is the cutoff? Is there a cutoff? Do you have to have a certain grade point average to get into the school? And I thought there was a lawsuit about this.
I can comment, generally speaking, on a statewide basis, that there is some activity going on around proposed legislation that will change the way many, most vocational technical schools go through their admissions process, where we go through, and many others go through a five-stage process in reviewing an application and getting acceptance. A lot of those points relate to tuition, conduct, grades, a letter of recommendation from the sending district counselor, and an interview with, with our admissions director. And there's some activity about whether or not that's, that's fair, or whether that's, that's holding down some disadvantaged class of, of students. And there's a proposed lottery system that's being out there, but that has not affected, at this point, Minuteman, and to the point where we were able to accept all of our in-district applications this year. So, it's not necessarily an issue for Minuteman, but it's certainly an issue statewide, because the, the demand for vocational education exceeds the number of seats that are available in most, most school, regional vocational technical school districts.
Okay. So, did I hear you correctly to say that all of your applicants were accepted this year?
That's correct.
Excellent. What, what would be criteria for not accepting them? Do you know off the top of your head?
Yeah, I think it's, it's the, of the five criteria, there needs to be certain level of, what we really concentrate on, I think, in the interview process, is the willingness of the students who want to pursue a vocational technical education. Sometimes in, in having those interviews, you could tell why the student's there. Conduct's a big issue, too. Many of our shops handle power tools and things of that nature, and we want to make sure that student conduct is appropriate for that environment.
Well, I'm delighted to hear that everyone was accepted. And I got to say, I'm, there's an echo. I'm not understanding a lot of what you're saying. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Dre, next, and then after that, Mr. Jalcutt.
Good evening. Elizabeth Dre, Precinct 10. It caught my ear when you were talking about the east building that you're thinking of expanding into. Is that currently Minuteman property?
Yes.
Okay. So, the daycare that's there, and I don't know if there was other businesses, are they going to be relocated, or where will they go?
They're no longer there. It was in the past they used them.
Perfect. So, that's currently empty and available for you, for you to use for your animal sciences?
That's correct.
Wonderful. What is your anticipated ongoing capital cost of developing that project?
It's still way too early. We're guest, estimating right now that it's, it's a 16,000-square-foot building, and we're thinking it's about $1,000, $1,000 a square foot to renovate. So, there may be some phasing of that because of the way the building's laid out. There's a wing with 10,000 square feet, and another wing with 6,000 square feet. So, depending on the opportunities, we'd like to see if there's a way that we can do that through our, our own stabilization funding, perhaps some state capital grant funds, maybe a partnership. We could have an industry partner participate as well. But I think it would be a challenge for the district to ask the member towns for an investment in that, at least at this point, without either offering a new program that might attract new students, or some type of a opportunity for increased enrollment.
So, would it be fair to summarize that, to say that you're looking to fund that through resources that are not increasing the cost per member town?
That's the goal.
The goal.
How we, how that process plays out will be, to be determined.
Okay. And my last question is, do you have any insight why the Arlington town enrollment has been decreasing?
I have some anecdotal comments about that. I think that with the Arlington High School coming online, I think that's particularly attractive to some of the Arlington Middle School students. We've had great relationships with the administration at Arlington Middle, those schools. And oftentimes, at our showcase events or things like that, we do have a lot of students that come by from Arlington that like to look and see. But at the end of the day, we do hear comments where this is a cool school, but I think we're going to go to the new school at Arlington. So, I think we're seeing a lot of that.
All right. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Jalcutt, and then after that, Ms. Pile.
Thank you, Daniel Jalcutt, Precinct 6. Move to terminate debate on Article 45.
Okay, we have a motion to terminate debate and a second. All those in favor of terminating debate on Article 45, say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed, say no.
No!
The debate is terminated. So, we will go to a vote on the main motion under Article 45, which calls for an appropriation of $8,562,229 for the purpose of paying the town's a portion share of the operating and maintenance costs of the Minuteman Regional Vocational Technical High School budget. And so, let's take a, let's open up, voting is now open on that. So, if you're in favor of that appropriation of roughly $8.5 million, vote 1 for yes. If you're opposed, press 2 for no, or 3 to abstain. Voting's about to close. And it passes 210, the affirmative, 2 in the negative, and 2 abstentions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Article 45 is disposed. Thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you.
Mr. Wagner, point of order?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Carl Wagner, Precinct 15. The general example given for a point of order is, "I can't hear." Well, I don't know if it's been made clear, but over the last two nights, the sound really, and I've heard people whispering behind me that they can't hear either. The sound is not adequate. I would ask, please, Mr. Moderator, if the town could make checks or improvements in the sound before the next meeting of town meeting. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. And we'll see if there's anything we can do during the, the break as well. Okay, Ms. Deschler?
I move that Articles 16 through 44 be taken from the table.
We have a motion to take Articles 16 through 44, the, the ones that have not yet been disposed from the table. We have a second. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed, it's unanimous. So, that brings us back to Article 16. So, before we bring up any speakers on this, let's show the speaker queue. And we'll clear that so everyone can see. And so, speaker queue is now cleared, starting with the fresh queue. And so, Mr. DeCorsi, did you want to introduce the Select Board's recommended vote on Article 16, please?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Select Board moved, voted favorable action by a 5 to 0 vote to ban pet sales and pet shops. I understand the proponent is going to be making a presentation that, with slides that are within the annotated warrant.
Great, thank you. Ms. Kapka?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Asha Kapka, Precinct 1. I'd like to introduce Laura Kiesel, who's going to speak and present the article.
Okay. And Ms. Kiesel is a resident of Arlington, correct?
Yes, she is.
Okay, then she has the right to speak. Okay, I believe Ms. Kiesel would be connecting from the satellite room. Could we bring up video of the satellite room? Oh, then we won't be able to see the slides. Okay, so the, the slides are up. So, we can see Ms. Kiesel. Hello? Welcome to town meeting. And so, I guess in the main hall, we can only see this. I've paused the timer here, don't worry. The, we'll show the slides here, if that's okay, while, while you speak. And then you can see if you-
Can I, will I see the slides?
Yeah, you should be able to see us and the slides in the two displays there. All set? And so-
There you go.
Okay, so we can see the slides now, so the floor's yours, Ms. Kiesel.
Great. Thank you so much for, for taking my presentation tonight. My name is Laura Kiesel. I am an Arlington resident of Precinct 7, and tonight I will be presenting on Article 16, the humane pet shop warrant, which is basically a prohibition or a ban on the sale of live pets in Arlington. Next slide, please. So, just a quick overview. This prohibition will not apply to animal shelters or private breeders selling directly to people or households. It would enable partnerships between pet shops and animal rescues, so that those animal rescues could use those spaces in pet stores to adopt out pets, as is occurring in next door in Cambridge at Pet Smarts, where they have enacted a similar pet ban that we are attempting tonight. And this is essentially a preventative measure. Currently, 14 municipalities in the Commonwealth have enacted a pet sale ban of some sort, including the state of New York. So, we want to make sure that as that market shrinks, it does not shift into Arlington. This is basically about addressing the issue of pet mills and poaching animals from the wild. Next slide, please. So, currently, there are no pet shops in Arlington that sell live animals. We do have a pet code, but it only sells goods and services. But again, we want to make sure that that pet code does not expand to sell animals, or that another pet store does not move in. Next slide, please. So, 2.6 million puppies are born from puppy mills every year in the United States, and there's a competitive rate for kittens as well. But meanwhile, there are 1 million dogs and cats that are euthanized every year in the United States. So, what we are trying to address is the issue of too many animals and too few homes. Next slide, please. So, in attempting to not add to that surplus, we don't want to just emphasize puppies and kittens, but this is an issue that affects all animals that are popularly sold as pets, including mammals, birds, reptiles, amphibians, and fish. And that is why this warrant is comprehensive to include all of those. And that latter provision, provision for fish was added in at the Select Board's recommendation. Next slide, please. So, why not just mammals? So, just as there are puppy and kitten mills, there are actually pet mills for every type of pet that is popularly sold as, in pet stores. There are parrot mills, there are reptile mills, there are even multi-species mills. And these are large, industrial-sized mills and warehouses where animals are kept by the hundreds or thousands in cramped, filthy cages. In addition to being very stressful and cruel for the animals themselves, this also makes it more likely that there will be a disease outbreak that can jump to and impact people. Birds, reptiles, amphibians, and fish are not protected by the Animal Welfare Act as dogs, cats, and rabbits are. So, these animals actually need additional protections. Also, reptiles, birds, and fish and amphibians suffer extremely high mortality rates that are the ones that are sold in pet stores. 70, even 75 to 90% die either before the point of sale or within their first year of purchase. Many of the animals that are milled are actually poached from the wild, and this is causing the endangerment of these animals and their native ecosystems. Some examples of that are the African gray parrot and the Madagascar radiant tortoise, and this is adversely impacting our global biodiversity. Next slide, please. When it comes to fish, currently, 1 billion fish from 5,400 species are traded in ornamental fish trade globally every year. And the United States by far is the number one importer of fish. And the demand for pet fish is contributing to the degradation of our coral reefs, which are critical for ocean health and a livable climate. Next slide, please. The other problem is that former pets are becoming invasive species. Because so many people cannot care for these animals, or they don't have the homes for them, what happens is they wind up releasing them into our environment where they are becoming invasive species and are encroaching on our native species. Currently, there are 56 species of pet birds in the United States, including in the Northeast and Massachusetts. One prominent example of that is the monk parakeet pictured top right. And also, for turtles, the red-eared slider. 12 years ago, you could buy several red-eared sliders at any pet store in Massachusetts, but 10 years ago, they had to ban their sale because people were releasing them by the hundreds, 2,000s in our ponds and riverways, where they have now established breeding populations, and they are crowding out our native turtles, many of which are endangered or threatened. And even though that pet sale ban has helped a little bit, there are emerging threats with other pet turtles. And that red-eared slider pictured there, bottom right, is actually one here in Arlington at the Mystic River. Next slide, please. The same applies to pet fish. The most notorious and ubiquitous example of that are the goldfish that have also been released by the thousands into our native waterways, where they are crowding out and outcompeting our native fish and other aquatic species and driving them to the brink of extinction. Next slide, please. So, we have widespread support for this warrant. Dozens of Arlington residents signed our warrant petition. The Select Board favored it with a unanimous 5 to 0 vote in favor and expanded its protections to also encompass fish. We have the support of the MSPCA, the Animal Defense League, the Boston Animal Rescue League. But additionally, we also have the support of many smaller dog and cat rescues, as well as the two major rabbit rescues, the two major parrot rescues that service Massachusetts, and the Turtle Rescue League, which is the leading wildlife rehabilitation facility for turtles in Massachusetts, and have noted the impact of pet turtles on turtle species. And they take in pet turtles to try to mitigate that impact. But unfortunately, all of these rescues are inundated, and they note that pet shop pets are a big part of that problem. So, we hope that tonight, the town meeting will also support this warrant in its original iteration, and make sure that this includes comprehensive protections for all the species that were included. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Kiesel, for a very well-timed presentation. We also have an amendment. Mr. Varglu, did you want to introduce that?
Yes, please.
Yes. And actually, before we take Mr. Varglu, I see that the speaker queue is cleared. Is, is that, have there been no speakers to?
I just texted you, Mr. Moderator.
Oh, I, I wasn't checking texts, so.
We lost the speaker queue, so those five people that were on there have to listen.
Okay. So, the speaker queue, I just have two names on it right now, Mick Prentzer and Mr. Wagner. Who, Mr. Wagner, you dropped off the queue. You're back on the queue. Okay. Okay, names are coming in now. And so, Mr. Varglu, apologies for that. Go ahead.
Which microphone? There's two microphones here.
I think one of them is a light, I think.
Okay, thank you. Mustafa Varglu, Precinct 10. I put in an amendment to this article to basically, I'm sorry. I put in an amendment into this, to this article to remove birds, reptiles, amphibians, and fish, and leaving mammals as the prohibited animals as the article states. So, I want to recognize a few things as I, as I stand here. There are, as mentioned, no pet shops in Arlington, so, and this article and amendment would not address a current problem, and we may never have a pet shop in this town. Do want to point out, we do have a bait shop that has been here for generations. I don't know if this article will or will not affect the bait shop in East Arlington, so there may be an immediate effect from this article, if Fisher retained on the article. I also want to recognize that animal cruelty is a terrible thing, and the organizations that support this article are doing great work, and I fully support reducing animal cruelty, though I do think this article goes too far in terms of reducing options for people and attacks the problem at the wrong end. My motivation is that, as I mentioned, it's based on personal reasons and just this general principle, that at some point, it will be very hard for people to get pets other than dogs, cats, and rabbits from rescue shelters. And I think we're going to lose a lot of opportunities for people to learn about other animals. So, when you look at some of these other animals, there, and I've worked at pet shops as a teenager and into my 20s, and, and as you'll hear from other reasons, we've been, you know, frequenting other pet shops, there, there are some animals that basically, it's very hard to get any kind of selection from. it's very hard to get any kind of selection from that's not at a pet shop. If this is something that interests your family or may interest your family in the future, you're basically going to reduce the opportunity to have access to these. And it's a very homogenous world we'll end up in, I guess. When you're at pet shops, you get a chance to observe. The animals learn and choose more specialized species if that's in your interests. So specifically for my family, my two daughters at different times wanted lizards. We went to a good pet shop, Jabberwock, formerly in Winchester, now Stonem. You know, they spoke with the owners. One of them was going to get a chameleon. She was setting a chameleon. She realized that that was the wrong pet for her. She did not want that. She wouldn't be able to care for it properly. She switched directions. Got a different... She got a gecko. The other daughter wanted a bearded dragon, had done a lot of research. And that was confirmed by being at the pet shop. There was a photo of bearded dragons shown in the previous slide. When they're young, they congregate. When they're older, they go their own way and they actually fight if they get together. So that was fairly normal, what was shown in that photo. I'd also like to point out that when we go to a pet shop, there's little knowledge of the breeding history of the animals that you're looking at. And as people that also have a dog and a cat or a cat and a bird from individual breeders, we have very little knowledge of the heritage of the animals that we got. I don't think there's a big difference, frankly, for the layperson to know what they're getting, whether it's from a breeder or a pet shop. And I think singling out pet shops is a disadvantage. We were asked very rudimentary questions by the breeders that we went to for the animals we got. Frankly, we have a far better relationship with the pet shop and far more feedback and learning from them than we have from individual breeders. And I will just bring up quickly that I think people would be able to keep a much wider variety of pets if this article does not pass. And I think there's a better way to deal with animal cruelty, which is to go to the source of it and legislate for these animals. If the moderator would allow, there is a town resident who has a lot of experience in the field of fish and aquariums as an environmental consultant, George Buckley. Would he be allowed to speak during this time to my amendment?
He is a town resident?
Yes, he's a town resident, Precinct 16.
You might want to move your motion in case you run out of time.
Yes, I'd like to move my motion. I don't know what the words are.
Yeah. We've motioned to...
Thank you.
The amendment is now before us. Thank you. And your speaker?
Mr. Buckley is at the back of the room. Come on, sir.
Name and address, please.
Greetings. My name is George Buckley, a member of Precinct 16 for many decades. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I come here to very strongly ask you to vote for the amendment as proposed by Mr. Varglou or vote no on Article 16. The reason... My main reason is fish should never have been included. Simon Gomery, who somebody may know as a major author, natural history writer, wrote a great, award-winning book, "Amazon Adventure." And in it, she talked about a tiny fish is helping to save the Amazon. And that tiny fish is the Catarne Leon Tetra. And that tiny fish is harvested locally by the local village people, who then work to protect that environment, the water and the jungle. Those fishes are exported and sold around the world. And if we continue to ban this type of thing, those villages, those Amazon areas will be lost. I worked on that project with New England Aquarium staff for 20 years. Scott Dowd, somebody you know, Danny Laughlin. And it's been a huge success. There's other programs like that that have been huge successes in breeding fish. 90% of the fish sold in pet shops or through the internet are freshwater. Over 95% of those are bred in captivity. I've worked on those projects often and regularly in my career. And what's interesting is even marine tropicals now are bred in captivity. The clownfish, for instance. I worked on with Philippe Gusteau and Dr. David Vaunett at Harvard Ranch Ecological. 95% now are bred in captivity. There are solutions to this problem, but it can't be done quickly. We'd need to vote the article down and rewrite sections over the summer, allowing only naturally, sustainably harvested fish from the wild and naturally bred fish to be sold. It's critical that we not shut off avenues like this. Young aquarists who started breeding zebrafish 30 or 40 years ago led to MIT being able to have the world's top zebrafish study and breeding facility. They went to the Boston Aquarium Society, local people like you and I that had home aquarium that knew how to breed those fish so they could learn how to do it. And we've got to be really careful in trying to do something good that we don't do bad. In the end, it's a precautionary principle, do no harm. So I'd ask you to vote 16 down. Vote for the amendment. If you can't vote for the amendment, vote 16 down. Let's rewrite that. So it's a much better, much more workable thing. And we have been selling fish for decades here already in East Arlington with the bait shop there. Unfortunately, it's closed right now to a family eldest. But I was hoping to have them come chat with you about that. The other things are that...
I'm sorry, we're at time.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I see Town Council is gesturing. Mr. Cunningham? Either you have a legal opinion or you own a bait shop. Do you want to speak? Okay.
Both, Mr. Moderator, thank you. Michael Cunningham, Town Council. I just want to respond to the question regarding the bait shop. I note that in Section 1C of the proposed bylaw, it defines pet shop as, quote, "It means a retail establishment where animals are sold or offered for sale as pets, which is required to be licensed pursuant to MGL, Chapter 129, Section 39A, and 330 CMR 12." Bait shops are licensed pursuant to general law, Chapter 130, Section 80. So this bylaw would not impact the bait shop.
Thank you. Okay, can we show the speaker queue? An apology is that that got cleared out. Actually, before Mr. Newton comes up, I'm going to select a name that I don't think we've heard speak yet. Mr. Prokosh? Pass. Okay, Mr. Newton.
Sunday Newton, Precinct 10. To move to terminate debate on Article 16 and all items.
Okay, we have motioned to terminate debate. And we have a second. This is for... All those in favor of terminating debate on Article 16 and all matters before it, say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed?
No!
Debate continues. Let's see. Mr. Schlickman, you might have been first on the list before it got cleared. I don't recall, but why don't you come up and speak? Since you're close to the microphone. And then after that, we'll take Mr. Revak.
Thank you. Paul Schlickman, Precinct 9. I rise to introduce Carrie Teal, a resident of Arlington, Lakeview Street, who would like to address the town meeting.
Okay. She is a resident, so she has the right to speak. He has... I'm sorry. He has the right to speak.
Mr. Moderator, thank you very much. Carrie Teal, Precinct 10. I will be brief. I have spent the last 25 years working in the animal welfare field on an unrelated issue. My nonprofit organization, which is an international organization that works on an animal welfare issue is a stone's throw from this debate tonight. Although I have not worked on this issue, I have been around people who have worked on this pet shop and overpopulation issue over the last two decades. And it's been a part of my life. My mother, as I was growing up, constantly was rescuing dogs. I grew up in a house with 6, 8, 10 dogs. I broke up a lot of dog fights, I can tell you. Now she rescues cats. I'm sure Paul, my good friend Paul, appreciates that as a cat owner. I can't... I'm not going to say how many cats she has, but she has a lot. There are so many people in our community who literally bend over backwards and make so many sacrifices to help animals dying in shelters. Because there are still today a lot of animals dying in shelters. Close to a million animals a year nationally are dying in shelters. Thousands of animals die in shelters in Massachusetts. And there has been years and years of policy work on this issue because at some point, people said, you know what? I am tired of going to the shelter week after week after week and saving as many as I can while others die. And so very smart policy solutions have been crafted around this issue. Article 16 is a great example of that. This didn't come out of nowhere. This is something that people have been working on and fighting for, again, for decades. There are laws being fought for at the federal level on this issue, at the state level, and at the local level. And I would also just say, to me, this is about who we are. It's not just about helping animals. It's not just about stopping that pet overpopulation, but it's a reflection of our values. That's why I am so proud that my nonprofit is based here. It's why I am so proud that Arlington has time and again stood with the animals on the greyhound racing vote, on the trapping ballot vote, on the article a few nights ago. Time and again, you have been here for the animals. And I ask you to be there again for the animals tonight and support this good warrant article. Finally, I was going to address the bait shop issue. I'm grateful for the Town Council who clarified that. This also will not prohibit the breeding of fish, will not prohibit the private sale of fish. None of the things that were talked about are addressed that were raised earlier are addressed by this warrant article. None of them. This is a carefully crafted warrant article. And as Laura said in presenting this, it was the Select Board that said, can we make this stronger? That is something I'm appreciative of and grateful for. So I ask you, please, vote yes on this article, vote down the amendment, and cast another good vote tonight for the animals. Thank you.
Thank you. So take Mr. Revak next. And then after that, Ms. Friedman. Was he... I think names were removed from the list, no?
I forgot my name.
Yep.
Mr. Moderator, I remember my name.
Okay. Name was removed. Thank you. Ms. Friedman? And then after Ms. Friedman, we'll take Mr. Hamlin. I don't think we've heard from him yet. Ms. Friedman?
Beth Ann Friedman, Precinct 15. And I rise in favor of the amendment opposed to the main article. I think the main article goes way too far. And I agree that it's given that there are so many cats and dogs in shelters that sale of mammals should be prohibited, but not, you know, some of the other species that are listed in this article. So I hope you vote yes on the amendment. And if that doesn't pass, no on the main article. Thank you.
Thank you. So take Mr. Hamlin next. And then Max Pretzer from the satellite room, please. And then Mr. Oster.
What about me, Mr. Wagner?
David Pretzer, Precinct 17. I just want to...
Because you're taking them out of order because everything got jumbled. And also, it's out of my discretion. Sorry for the interruption, Mr.... Max Pretzer, go ahead.
Yeah. I just want to reiterate, you know, this is not... You know, I think the animal cruelty aspects of the main motion are very compelling. I also just want to reiterate the ecological impact. You know, stray cats and dogs are a big issue. But also, when reptiles, amphibians, fish are released into the wild, that can really be devastating to native species. We have a lot of problems with our natural areas in Arlington and in our vicinity. And I think we need to be doing more to support and safeguard our native species. And I think this is one way of doing that. When people have pets sold at pet stores, they're more likely to be impulse purchases that people might not know what they're getting into. Like, I'm glad some people have had great experiences at pet stores, but there are plenty of people that have had not been informed when buying a pet at a pet store and then later are unable to care for it or unwilling to care for it. And it is released in the wild, and it can cause great damage to our environment. I also wanted to remind everyone that this ban is limited to retail pet stores. You can still purchase cats, dogs, birds, fish, reptiles, amphibians from private breeders in addition to rescue sites. I know we're all more familiar with cat and dog rescues, but there are plenty of opportunities for rescuing other types of animals, either via the internet or via specialized rescues. So I do not think passing this measure will prevent anyone from obtaining a pet lizard, a pet fish, a pet snake. If that's what they want, they might make it. You might need to do a bit more research. But I think before acquiring a pet like that, you should be doing your research anyways. And so I think that's a win, both for lovers of more unusual pets and for our environment. So I urge you to vote against the amendment and for the main motion. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I said Mr. Oster next? Pass. Mr. Wagner. And that's not a reward for the outbursts, by the way. And then after that, Mr. Rudik. And then after that, Mr. Rudick.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Carl Wagner, Precinct 15. I think the proponents have a good purpose, which is to prevent animal cruelty, which we all care about or should. But I don't think that government succeeds by telling 40,000 people, you can't have pets if we want to prevent cruelty to animals. I would ask that you vote no on this article and seek instead a way for Arlington to improve the safety and health of animals, not to go for something like they have here. Should we be preventing people from eating meat because we don't think it's right? Should we be legislating a limit that is not intended to stop harm? It's simply going to stop business and people from enjoying pets? So I ask you to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, Mr. Rudick? And then Ms. Brown after that. I think it should be Mrs. Brown.
Ben Rudick, Precinct 5. I move to terminate debate.
Under all.
Under everything in the universe.
I don't think we have that kind of power.
Okay, thank you.
So we have a motion to terminate debate on Article 16 and all matters before it. All those in favor say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed say no.
No!
Debate is terminated. So we will first vote on the Varglu Amendment. So if we, everyone should have a copy of this, so we're not going to run through it in detail, but it's essentially removing birds, reptiles, amphibians, and fish from the prohibition, leaving just mammals. Okay, I think we're still letting folks to the speaker queue, but... So if we can bring up a vote on the Varglu Amendment, okay, voting is now open. If you're in favor of the Varglu Amendment to retain the ban on the sale of mammals, but to remove the ban on birds, reptiles, amphibians, and fish, vote 1 for yes. If you want to leave birds, reptiles, amphibians, and fish in the ban, press 2 for no, or 3 to abstain. Okay, voting will close shortly. Okay, let's close voting. And the motion fails. 79 in the affirmative, 130 in the negative, 3 abstentions. So the main motion remains unamended, not amended. So now let's take a vote on the main motion under Article 16, which is still the recommended vote of the select board. And so I'm not going to read the whole thing, but this voting is open now. So if you're in favor of amending Title I of the town bylaws to add a new provision to ban the sale of mammals, birds, reptiles, amphibians, and fish in pet shops within the town, press 1 for yes. If you're opposed to that ban, press 2 for no, and 3 to abstain. This is a majority vote. Okay, voting is closed. And the motion passes. 173 in the affirmative, 42 in the negative, 2 abstentions. That takes us to Article 17, and it's 9:30, so we will break for 10 minutes. Please be back in your seats and ready to go in 10 minutes. And also, and we'll do swearing in for any town meeting members who haven't been sworn in yet. You can find Ms. Brazil, find the town clerk, and she'll get you sworn in during the break. Thank you. 10 minutes.
ACMI Productions are only made possible with your support. Visit patreon.com/ACMI to learn how you can help.
Okay, everyone, we're getting started. Okay, that brings us to Article 17.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, I would like to lay Article 17 on the table, and the reason for that is the proponents, you'll see, have a substitute motion. There are some issues within the substitute motion that the proponents will be working out with the town manager, and we thought for a more complete, tighter presentation between the select board report and the substitute motion, it should be done on the same night. So we're asking to lay it on the table with the intent that we would come back next Wednesday should the special town meeting conclude at that time.
Okay, we have a motion to lay Article 17 on the table.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor of laying Article 17 on the table say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed say no. It is laid on the table. That brings us to Article 18. Let's see. And this is the recommended vote of no action. And this, the, let's see, Mr. Wagner had requested a hold from the consent agenda. I believe the reasoning was that a resident was expected to provide a substitute, but that did not materialize. That's still correct, Mr. Wagner? Okay. So we have a no-action vote ahead of us, so there is no scope for debate. So we will go straight to a vote. Don't know if, yeah, and Mr. Cunningham, does this by any chance require electronic vote? Do you know, for Article 18? No. Okay, so we'll do a voice vote on no action. All those in favor of no action under the main motion of Article 18 say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed? It's a majority vote. We will do nothing. Okay, that brings us to Article 19. Let's see, Mr. DeCoursey?
I'm... Oh, I'm sorry. My mistake.
That brings us to Article 20, home rule legislation related to the town clerk's position. Mr. DeCoursey?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The select board moved favorable action by unanimous vote. This is the home rule legislation that would convert the town clerk position from an elected position to an appointed position. We'd acted on this previously at town meeting. The referendum this April, voters approved it by 59% was the favorable vote on that. And what it requires is an act of, we need legislative approval to approve the amendment to the Town Manager Act. And I will say that this language is identical to what we used, or very similar to what we used when we converted the treasurer's position from an elected position to an appointed position.
Okay, one second. Okay, and we have a, we have a motion from, an amendment from Mr. Warden. Mr. Warden, do you want to introduce your amendment? And also, before, as Mr. Warden's making his way up, can we show the speaker queue, please? It was just recently cleared, and we have two names on there. And then let's switch back now to Mr. Warden's amendment under Article 20.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Warden, Precinct 8.
Mr. Warden, can you just take the microphone down?
Oh, there you go.
There you go, thank you.
Well, I know some people have been having, some people, including me, have been having difficulty hearing the microphone, so I hope everybody can hear me. If you can't hear me, raise your hand. Well, my amendment would simply provide that although the town clerk would be appointed by the manager, that person should be a resident of the town of Arlington. And I say that because I think of the, of all the many officials we have appointed and elected, that the average citizen comes in contact with, the town clerk and her staff are the face of the town for most people. It starts, if you're born, when you're born, your parents come in, maybe you get a birth certificate. At the other end, after you die, your children come in to get a death certificate. If you want to vote, you have to come into the clerk's office to register. If you want to get, like all few folks did, want to run for town meeting, you come to the town clerk's office to get your nomination papers, and then you go back there to file them. And so it's different than, you may never have occasion to meet with the select board members, or the manager, or the treasurer. You might go into the treasurer's office to give one of the clerks some money, like we all did last year, last week, or early this week. But it's the town clerk's offices where practically everybody has to go one time or another. And so I think it's important that that one that interfaces most with the public should be one of the people in our town. And, I mean, we had an extraordinary case where the town clerk was summoned from her home early in the morning because of a prospective bridegroom who forgot to get a marriage license. But she came then down to town hall and helped him. Now, if the town clerk was somebody who was appointed from, I don't know, any Bill Ricker or somewhere, would they do that? Well, maybe, maybe not. And it seems to me that this town of 46,000 people, of whom probably 27,000 are adults, that the talent and requirements to serve as town clerk could be found without, you don't have to go have a worldwide search to find someone who would be that kind of person, who would be a good town clerk. So, and I think we ought to have at least one of our officials, somebody who is, lives in the town, knows the town, has been familiar with it, and knows its people. So I ask you to support my amendment. Thank you.
Mr. Warden, can you make the motion?
Oh, yes. I moved that the recommended vote of the board, the select board, be amended by adding to it the words, the town clerk, "The appointee shall be a resident of the town of Arlington", and the place indicated in my amendment.
Okay, we have a motion to amend. Do we have a second?
Yes!
We have a second.
Thank you.
Your amendment is now pending before us. Thank you. Let's see, from the speaker queue, first we'll take Ms. LaCourt, and then Mr. Moore. Mr. Christopher Moore.
Annie LaCourt, Precinct 13. First, I have a question for Mr. Moderator, I believe, town council. If we add the phrase "in question" to the line "in question," is it clear that it only applies to the clerk, as opposed to the other offices mentioned in the sentence?
Yeah, I received this question by email, and Mr. Cunningham, feel free to add to it, that based on context and also history, which would be taken into account, if this got litigated, there would be a very clear case that contextually applies only to the clerk's position. Mr. Cunningham, is there anything to add to that? Okay.
Thank you. So there are two reasons for us to have an appointed clerk. The first reason to have an appointed clerk is because it allows us to put a professional into what is an operational position, not a policymaking position, where we would normally want someone who represents us, who therefore is a resident of the town, and who's familiar with the culture of the town, and the town's needs, and so on and so forth, in the position. It's a purely operational position. The second reason that we want an appointed clerk is because we do want to be able to search for that professional outside the borders of the town. When you go to the clerk's office, what you want is good service professionally provided, and when you are submitting documents, or we finish the business of the town meeting, and home rule petitions have to be filed, and so on and so forth, you want to know that the person in the clerk's office knows how to handle all the intricacies of that job, and make sure that all of that goes well, and that our records are preserved properly, and so on and so forth. It might be true that on a Sunday morning, when somebody needs their marriage license and they forgot to get it, that if the clerk lives in Cambridge, they couldn't get here and might or might not be motivated to get here really quickly. But in the meantime, all the other business of the clerk's office will be running well if we are able to choose our clerk from amongst the best possible candidates interested in the job, regardless of whether or not they live in the town. This is not a position where, when it was an elected position, you had any idea what the clerk was doing in between elections, because the clerk holds no public meetings. Similar to the treasurer's office, these were not offices where it was clear to the public what the person in the office was doing, unless they went to the treasurer's office to pay a bill, or they went to the clerk's office to get their dog license. And even then, you don't really know everything that's going on behind the scenes. You can't tell when you pay your tax bill what the treasurer's investment policy is. You can't tell when you go to the town clerk's office to get your dog license whether or not home rule petitions have been properly filed. We need professionals in these positions. We need to be able to seek the best possible professional, and therefore, we should not hamper our hiring capability by adding Mr. Warden's amendment to this article. However, we should pass the main motion as presented by the Board of Selectment, or Select Board. I'll never get that right. Thank you.
Thank you. Pass. And let's take some new names, voices we haven't heard, I think, at this town meeting yet. Mr. Grunko, and then Mr. Valanke. I don't think we've heard before.
Zach Grunko, Precinct 13. I move the question all matters before it.
We have motion to terminate debate, and we have a second. All those in favor of terminating debate on Article 20 and all matters before it say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed say no.
No!
Debate continues. Mr. Valanke? Okay. Okay, so we have a challenge to the voice vote. Let's bring up a two-thirds vote on termination of debate, and I'll make sure we keep the speaker queue. I'll try to take a picture, just in case. Okay, the voting is open. If you're in favor of terminating debate under Article 20, press 1 for yes. If you want to continue debate, press 2 for no, or 3 to abstain. Okay, let's close voting. And it's terminated. 146 in the affirmative, 65 in the negative. So we'll first vote on the Warden amendment. And so the Warden amendment would add the restriction that the appointed town clerk needs to be a resident of Arlington. Okay, voting is open. If you're in favor of Mr. Warden's amendment to limit the appointed clerk's position to a resident of Arlington, you'd press 1 for yes, press 2 to reject that amendment, and 3 to abstain. Okay, let's close voting. And the amendment fails. 52 in the affirmative, 162 in the negative, 2 abstentions. Let's bring up a vote now on the main motion under Article 20. Which would authorize the select board to file, voting is open, so you'd press 1 if you wish to authorize the select board to file home rule legislation to amend the Town Manager Act to convert the town clerk from an elected to appointed position. Press 2 for no, to not authorize the select board to do that, and 3 to abstain. Okay, let's close voting. And the motion passes. 173 in the affirmative, 38 in the negative, 5 abstentions. That brings us now to Article 21, which was on the consent agenda and was held by Ms. Preston. There was also a substitute motion that was withdrawn, wasn't really moved, so it doesn't need to be withdrawn, but it will not be made, I believe. And so, Mr. DeCoursey, do you want to just introduce this article? And we also have the Director of Assessments with us tonight, if there's any clarifications
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The select board moved no action on this by unanimous vote. We thought originally there was going to be a substitute, but just for the town meetings, for clarification purposes, this article was put in initially by the town manager because there was some uncertainty as to how a senior citizen exemption would be applied next year, where the funds would come. As a result of meetings that we had with the assessors and further clarification, the funds would come out of the overlay accounts, so there's no action required by town meeting. And for that reason, the town manager recommended that we vote no action, and we did that.
Okay, thank you. And so we don't have any substitute motion, so we will proceed, and so there's nothing to debate here, so we'll proceed straight to a vote on the main motion of no action under Article 21. And, Mr. Cunningham, do we need an electronic vote for this, for any reason? No. Okay, so we'll just take a voice vote on no action. All those in favor of no action under Article 21 say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed say no. It is unanimous. We will do nothing. And, let's see, that takes us to Article 22. Mr. DeCoursey?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Move to postpone Article 22 until Monday evening, and the reason for that is that the proponent of that is a student at the high school. She's not here this evening. She made a very compelling presentation to us, and I believe she would like to make the same presentation to town meeting. It was an expectation that we wouldn't reach that article this evening. For that reason, I'd like to give her that opportunity, of course, with the town meeting's approval.
So what precisely is the motion? Is it to postpone?
This is to postpone until Monday evening.
It is budget night on Monday evening, so is there a particular article before which or after which?
Yeah, well, we're thinking after budget, maybe...
So after...
Hang on one second, Mr. Moderator.
Maybe after the capital budget? Would that be too late? Mr. Diggins, I think, has context, because I believe he's been in touch with the speaker? With the resident?
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Moderator. The motion would be to postpone until after presentation of the capital budget.
After Article 40. Mr. Diggins, do you have any context?
Leonard Diggins, Precinct 3. Actually, the intent was to postpone it till Wednesday, the 8th.
So I thought you had exams on Tuesdays.
Yes, yes. So we're requesting to postpone it till Wednesday, the 8th, after special town meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Select board working together here. Thank you, Mr. Diggins.
So is the motion for, to postpone until Wednesday?
Date certain, Wednesday, maybe right after special town meeting.
After special town meeting on Wednesday?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a majority vote, or a motion with a majority vote to postpone Article 22 until the dissolution of the special town meeting, or until after business of the special town meeting on Wednesday. There's reasons for that. And we have a second. All those in favor of that postponement say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed?
No!
It is postponed. Until after we complete business, the special town meeting on that night. And that brings us now, let's see, it's postponed, and that brings us to Article 23.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The CDBG report, it has been included, hard copies in the back of the room and on the annotated warrant, and the planning director will be presenting the CDBG report.
Okay. And while we have our presenter coming up, can we just show the speaker queue and show it cleared? Good. So you can click in if you're interested in speaking on this. And, let's see, and who is speaking on CDBG?
Ms. Ricker will be speaking.
Good evening. I'm Claire Ricker. I'm your Director of Planning and Community Development here. I'm going to present the CDBG budget for the year. The CDBG committee had met several times over the spring to discuss awards of CDBG funds, and tried to meet as many requests as possible. We anticipate receiving less funding in program year 50 than we did in program year 49, for a total of about $1,001,000. We broke that down into a few categories. One, under housing, $200,000 related to capital improvements for Caritas communities and the Housing Corporation of Arlington. Public services, we've had several awardees who've been awarded in the past. Public services, we've had several awardees who've been awarded in the past, continuing their programs that have been so helpful in this community, for a total of $151,000. Public facility improvements, mostly capital improvements related to ADA walkway in the Hauser Building for the Housing Authority. Lower Millbrook flood resilience design, which is a green infrastructure project. And then, continuing our program of ADA curb ramp installations to the tune of about $100,000. Total for public facilities improvements this year, about $450,000. And then, planning and administration, we will offset salaries in the Department of Planning and Community Development, about $50,000. For planning studies, I've asked for $65,000. It looks like they'd like to award me about $50,000. The grants administrator and general administration of the CDBG program makes up the rest of that funding for about $200,000 totals, and that brings us to the, about the $1 million figure that we will have to disburse this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go over to the speaker queue, and we have Ms. Garber first, and then Mr. Kepline.
Judith Garber, Precinct 4. I have a question about the Arlington Eats food market that was requested, $30,000, and expected to benefit nearly 3,000 individuals. Funding was recommended at $0. Do you know why that, why was that was recommended at $0?
Director Ricker, do you have an answer?
Thank you again, Claire Ricker, Director of Planning and Community Development. It was, there were a lot of conversations about different manners of funding, and it was determined at the time that Arlington Eats probably has other pathways to funding and other grant, potential grant awards that they may qualify for. And so, unfortunately, this time around, we weren't able to award them any CDBG dollars.
All right. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kepline, and then Ms. Hanson after that.
Mark Kepline, Precinct 9. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I've heard various stories from different sources that the nature of the funding for some types of projects involves a repayment period after 15 or 20 years. Is that true, or is this purely a grant process, and there's no repayment into the fund?
Director Ricker or Mr. Feeney, do you have an answer?
Claire Ricker, Director of Planning and Community Development. It is my understanding that these are grants and are not subject to repayment unless we were to take out a loan to bond against our future grant awards, which is called, I believe, a Section 106 loan. We do not have any of those outstanding at this time.
Okay. Thank you. And a fellow town meeting member was curious about the foot of the Rocks Parklet. There's $200,000 being allocated to that. It's to be made a public gathering space at the intersection of Mass Ave and Lowell Street. Has there been a lot of public? Oh, zero?
So, the figure is zero, I believe?
Was not approved. Oh, that's good to know. Thank you very much.
Ms. Hanson next, and then we'll take Mr. Schlickman.
Good evening. Linda Hanson, Precinct 9. I also just had a question mark about the Arlington Eats coming in at a $0 amount. I just feel like the need is growing, and the market is serving around 500 families a week now, which is a 50% increase from what it has been in the past. And while there are other opportunities to raise money for any nonprofit in town, this really feels like a core service that our town provides to the community. And if, it seems like there should be some, some form of kind of town buy-in into this program, and this seems like a potentially good source for that. So, I really hope that that can be considered in the future. And the other requests that were zeroed out, the Foot of the Rocks did get a big chunk of CPA money, and I guess Envision Arlington had funds left over from something else. So, I just hope that can be taken into consideration in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schlickman, and then Mr. Warden.
Paul Schlickman, Precinct 9. Motion to terminate debate under this article.
Okay, we have motion to terminate debate, and we have a second. All those in favor of terminating debate under Article 23 say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed say no.
No!
Debate is terminated. Okay, we'll take a vote on the main motion of Article 23. Okay, voting is now open. So, if you're in favor of endorsing the application for the federal fiscal year 2025 prepared by the town manager and the Select Board under the Housing and Community Development Act, vote 1 for yes. If you're opposed, to endorsing that application, press 2 for no. Or 3 to abstain. And the motion passes. 211 in the affirmative, 3 in the negative, 1 abstention. That brings us to Article 24. Mr. Feeney? Or Mr. DeCoursey?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve DeCoursey, Chair of the Select Board. This is our annual vote to reauthorize the various revolving funds that are contained in the Select Board report. I'd ask Alex McGee, our Deputy Town Manager of Finance, to present the revolving fund report.
And can we open the speaker queue here before Mr. McGee gets up?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Alex McGee, Deputy Town Manager, Finance Director. As the town meeting is aware, revolving funds are funds that are typically self-sustaining. So, they take in revenues and they support programmatic activities. The town has a number of revolving funds, which are listed in the vote language. We're seeking to establish two new revolving funds this year. The Cutter Gallery rentals with an expenditure cap of $15,000, and community center rentals at an expenditure cap not to exceed $50,000. The expenditure cap is a concept that requires a little bit more explanation. This is just the ceiling that cannot be spent above. It is set annually by the town meeting.
I'm sorry? All set? Okay. Okay, so, we'll take Mr. Warden from the speaker queue. No? Ms. Crowder? Mr. Loretta?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Chris Loretta, Precinct 7. I just have a question on the, it's called the life support services ambulance fee. It seems the expenditures are considerably larger than the receipts, and I'm wondering why that is, like to the tune of about $300,000.
Mr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Alex McGee, Deputy Town Manager. The reason for that is last, actually about a year and a half ago now, there's a change in how the town accounts for ambulance revenue. We can perform both basic life service or advanced life service. Typically, Armstrong Ambulance now takes all advanced life service. Ambulance rides, we take all basic life service. We used to report all of our ALS, so advanced life service, revenue into the revolving fund. We have a much lower revenue stream of ALS now. We have a much higher basic life service revenue stream. That goes into the general fund now. So, it's a change in how we record our revenue.
Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Moderator.
Seeing no more speakers in the queue, we'll go straight to a vote on the main motion under Article 24. And so, we'll bring up a vote. And so, the vote here is to reauthorize revolving funds for fiscal year 2025 as specified in the Select Board report. So, if you're in favor of reauthorizing revolving funds, press 1 for yes. If you're opposed, 2 for no. And 3 to abstain. Voting is open. Okay, let's close voting. And the motion passes. 211 in the affirmative, 0 in the negative. It is unanimous. That brings us to Article 25. Ms. Zember, I believe, is not here tonight, correct? And so, she asked me in writing to allow Mr. Revlack and Mr. Benson to speak on her behalf from the redevelopment board for some articles tonight. Mr. Revlack, you have the floor. And while Mr. Revlack comes up, let's show the speaker queue. And can we clear it? Actually, I don't know if that was new or not. No need to clear it if you already cleared it. Mr. Revlack, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Hello, I am Steve Revlack, a member of the Arlington Redevelopment Board, and I will be taking you through warrant Article 25 building definitions. All right, do we have slides for these? There should be one PDF with all of the ARB slides in it.
Andrew, don't type --
That it is.
Don't type your password right now.
Okay, next slide, please. All right, so Article 25 intends to clarify the zoning bylaw by refining the definitions of attached versus detached buildings. So, this was proposed by the Zoning Board of Appeals, and the current definitions of attached and detached buildings in the zoning bylaw are not internally consistent, so that some buildings do not clearly fall into either category. So, the revised definitions were written in consultation with the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Inspection Services Department, and are consistent with the manner in which ISD has been interpreting the zoning bylaw. So, next slide. For other direction. Yep, one more. Excellent. So, the proposed definition of a building attached would read, "A building having any portion of one or more walls or roofs in common with another adjoining building or buildings, or otherwise connected by a roof to another building or buildings." So, this defines attached buildings as sharing roofs or walls. So, the proposed definition of building detached would read, "A building that does not meet the definition of building attached." Consistency. So, the redevelopment board voted 5 to 0 at our April 1st meeting to recommend favorable action on Article 25. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. And this was initially on the consent agenda, and Mr. Warden had pulled it off. So, Mr. Warden, did you want to speak? And then, after Mr. Warden, we'll take Ms. Slutsky.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Warden, Precinct 8. No, I, I just felt that any, anything that relates to zoning should not just be on the consent agenda, that we don't even think about, look at it, or we just say yes, with a whole bunch of other stuff. So, I felt that it, that the, whatever it was, it should be explained to us by the board or the planning director or somebody, so that we would know exactly what we're voting on. This looks like a perfectly reasonable idea now that it has been explained. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Slutsky, I don't know if she, if you took your cell phone. Oh, it's no longer on the speaker queue that I can see. Ms. Slutsky, did you still wish to speak, or are you passing? And while we're waiting for an answer, we can take Mr. Rudick.
I passed.
Okay, passed. So, Mr. Rudick, and then we'll take Mr. Hallman, who we haven't heard from.
Ben Rudick, Precinct 5. I move to terminate debate on this article and all attached and detached.
Okay. So, we have a motion. We've motioned to terminate debate, and we have a second. All those in favor of terminating debate on Article 25 say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed say no.
No!
Debate is terminated. So, let's go to a vote now on the main motion of Article 25. This is a two-thirds vote, and this would amend Section 2 definitions in the zoning bylaws to amend the definitions of building attached and building detached. Voting is now open. If you're in favor of this change in definitions in the zoning bylaw, press 1 for yes. If you're opposed, press 2 for no, or 3 to abstain. Just a few more seconds. Okay, let's close voting. And the motion passes. 208 in the affirmative, 2 in the negative, and 2 abstentions. Takes us to Article 26. Mr. Benson, do you want to introduce this? Or Mr. Revlack?
Hello, Mr. Moderator. Steve Revlack, a member of the Arlington Redevelopment Board. Mr. Moderator, I would make a motion to lay Article 26 on the table until Article 27 has been disposed of.
And can you just clarify?
So, there's a piece in 26 that depends on 27, so we would like to do 27 first.
Okay. So, there's a logical dependency between the two. That makes more sense if we invert the order.
Correct.
Right. And so, and I got the same note from Ms. Zember in advance. All those in favor of, do you want to lay it on the table, or do you just want to postpone until after 27?
Oh, sorry, postponed. My apologies.
Okay. All those in favor of postponing Article 26 until after 27 say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed say no. It is unanimous. That brings us to Article 27. Mr. Revlack?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I am Steve Revlack, a member of the Arlington Redevelopment Board, and I will be taking you through warrant Article 27 related to an administrative correction in the zoning bylaw of the town of Arlington. Next slide, please. So, this article proposes to change the, an existing list of conditions in Section 592B1 from bullet points to letters, to make it easier to refer to individual provisions of the zoning bylaw. This article would also delete a subsection from the bylaw that is obsolete as it references dates that have passed. This article does not make any changes to the condition or rules under which accessory dwelling units are allowed, and this amendment was proposed by the Zoning Board of Appeals. So, next slide. And one more. So, the amendment text, here we see the bulk of the proposed change, where bullet points have been replaced with letters, making individual provisions easier to reference or cite. Next slide. And here, we see the deletion of a subsection that is obsolete as the effective dates have passed. So, the dates reference the addition of the accessory dwelling units to the bylaw, which were adopted by town meeting in the spring of 2021, and the six-month period referenced in Item 3 has passed as well. The Arlington Redevelopment Board voted 5 to 0 at our April 1st meeting to recommend favorable action on Article 27. Thank you.
Thank you. And can we switch over to the speaker queue and clear that? I should have done that earlier. I think these were from before. Yeah, these are from several minutes ago. Speaker queue is now open. Mr. Rudick? Pass. Okay. So, we have no more speakers. We're going to go to a vote on the main motion. Yes. All those in, actually, we're going to do an electronic vote on the main motion under Article 27. I see this. All right, let's see. Okay. Voting is now open. If you clicked the button before the green light came on, you just added yourself to a speaker queue, which no longer exists. So, if you're in favor of the changes to the zoning bylaw that Mr. Revlack stepped this -- us through, press 1 for yes. If you're opposed to those changes, press 2 for no, or 3 to abstain. Okay, let's close voting. And the motion passes. 212 in the affirmative, 1 in the negative. One person doesn't like letters instead of bullet points. That takes us to Article 28. I'm sorry, 26. 26, thank you. Mr. Benson?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. Eugene Benson from the Redevelopment Board. I'm going to take you through warrant Article 26, which is just an administrative clarification to the zoning bylaw. Next slide, please. This article proposes to update the references to exceptions in the requirements for district yard and open space made in Section 5.4.2A by adding a reference to 5.9.2.1e, an exception related to allowable setbacks for accessory dwelling units. The accessory dwelling unit exception reference exists elsewhere in the bylaw. So all this does is reference that there is an exception somewhere else in the bylaw. It does not change the substance of the bylaw at all. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. This just shows that we just add an additional reference to the existing code. This was recommended to us by the Zoning Board of Appeals to make it easier for them to do referencing back and forth. In their decisions, the ARB voted 5 to 0 at our April 1 meeting to recommend favorable action on this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. I see no names in the speaker queue, so we'll go directly to electronic vote on the main motion under Article 26. And so while that's coming up, we will -- let's see. Yeah, this is a vote to amend Section 542A, our district yard and open space requirements in the zoning bylaw to reference an exception found elsewhere in the zoning bylaw. So if you're in favor of that change that Mr. Benson described, press 1 for yes. If you're opposed to that change in the zoning bylaw, press 2 for no, or 3 to abstain. This is a 2/3s vote. Okay, voting is closed. And the main motion passes. 211 in the affirmative, 1 in the negative, and 2 abstentions. That takes us to Article 28. Mr. Benson? Can we show the speaker queue? And -- okay. And then back to the presentation. Mr. Benson?
Thank you again.
We have a point of order? There is a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Yes!
Okay. All those in favor of adjourning, say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed, say no.
No!
We are not adjourned. Mr. Benson?
Thank you so much. So again, I'm Eugene Benson from the Redevelopment Board. I'll be taking you through warrant Article 28, which refers to the deletion of the inland-wetland overlay district.
Microphone, please, Mr. Benson.
Inland-wetland, sorry, inland-wetland overlay district for this. So, thank you. Slides. There is a supplemental report that's also been filed, so we made one additional change, so you might look at both of those. And Arlington has -- thank you. Arlington has an inland-wetland overlay district that predates by many years the adoption of the State Wetlands Protection Act, which is implemented by the Arlington Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission has robust authority to protect wetlands and is the most appropriate body to do so, as the inclusion of the inland-wetland district in the zoning bylaw has created confusion about the appropriate body to adjudicate wetlands. Inclusion of the overlay district in the bylaw gives the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Redevelopment Board overlapping and superfluous jurisdiction better served by the Conservation Commission. This article was proposed by the Zoning Board of Appeals, and the town's conservation agent is supported by the Zoning Board of Appeals, Inspection Services Department, Department of Planning and Community Development, and the Conservation Commission. If you have not already done so, please read the memo in the annotated warrant from the Planning Director Claire Ricker and the town's environmental planner and conservation agent about why removing the inland-wetland overlay district is appropriate and necessary. Next slide. Next slide. All this shows is that we are deleting the reference to inland-wetland district in the lists of overlay districts. Next slide. And then we're deleting the entire section on this. I'll just speak for a couple of minutes on my own, since I have a few minutes left. For four years, I was the Executive Director of the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commissions. We did training and advocacy for wetlands protection and open space protection. I took a really close look at this to make sure that by deleting the overlay for the wetland district from the zoning bylaw, we would not in any way be making wetlands protection less in the town. I took a really close look at this. This used to be my job for a few years. There will be no loss of wetlands protection by removing the overlay district. It will just get rid of a lot of confusion. Our Conservation Commission, I've noticed from my years working on these things, is one of the best in the state, and this town has passed its own wetland bylaws to even strengthen the state bylaws. So I can assure you that this will have no negative impact on wetlands protection. I also spoke to a few people in town to say, "Has this bylaw, zoning bylaw, ever been used to stop any sort of wetland development since the town has had a Conservation Commission and has its own wetland bylaw?" And it has never been used for that. So I urge you to support this change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. And, Mr. Revellak, you had an amendment before. Am I correct that the supplemental report of the ARB that you handed in today subsumes
Mr. Moderator, Steve Revellak, Precinct 1, Town Meeting Member. I would like to withdraw my amendment, because it is subsumed by the supplemental report of the Arlington Redevelopment Board.
No need to withdraw. It was not moved. Thank you. So we'll go to the speaker queue, and start with Mr. Hurd, and then Mr. Loretty.
Yes.
Mr. Loretty, and then Mr. Hallman.
Thanks, Mr. Moderator. Chris Loretty, Precinct 7. I actually rise in opposition to this article and the proposed change. First, I think some of the information that was given to you, I don't think is factually correct. The Wetlands Protection Act was passed in Massachusetts, as I understand it, in 1972. This section of the bylaw didn't apply, or didn't come into effect until 1975, and it's remained in the bylaw consistently over the years, including six years ago, when the zoning bylaw was completely recodified. It was looked at then. It was modified, and it was left in. And if you noticed on the slides that Mr. Benson showed, there's also a floodplain district in there in the zoning bylaw. That, too, is something that the Conservation Commission deals with. I don't know why they didn't propose taking that out when they're proposing to take out this, because the exact same arguments they're making for taking out this district could have been made for that district. I suggest to you, there is one very good reason for keeping this in, and it's not necessarily to provide greater protection to the wetlands, it's to provide greater protection to the town for its permitting decisions. If this is part of a zoning bylaw, when a developer goes before the Redevelopment Board for a special permit, this gets effectively incorporated into their special permit. So if a developer wants to challenge the permit, this is part of that. And I think as a matter, you know, I would ask people if they can remember the last time a Redevelopment Board special permit has successfully been overturned in the courts. The last one that I can remember that was challenged at all successfully was a Sims redevelopment, probably 20 years ago. Now, if you ask someone on the Conservation Commission how frequently their decisions are turned over, I think you'll find that it's far more frequently. I know there were some, for example, regarding developments along Spide Pond. So I would suggest that until we're really sure that this does provide the same level of protection to the town, not only in the administration of the wetlands bylaw, but also in preserving the town's power to regulate development, I think it should stay in. The other advantage it also has is a lot of these developments, if they implicate wetlands, they're going to be before both the Redevelopment Board and the Conservation Commission anyway. And as someone who's served on the Redevelopment Board, I can tell you, there's never been any dissension or disagreement about how the Wetlands Protection Act should be applied. The Board has always deferred to the Conservation Commission. But one thing this does, which frankly, I'm not sure the Conservation Commission likes, is it gets them into the process early. The Conservation Commission always takes the position that they're the last group that wants to look at a project. This is actually good, in that it brings them into the process early, when the special permit granting authority, in this example, the Redevelopment Board, is getting involved. So that if, instead of going through in a sequential manner, going from the Redevelopment Board back to the Conservation Commission, which then may require changes that require the project to go back to the Redevelopment Board, this allows it all to be handled all at once. So I think, I see some distinct advantages to keeping it in. My suggestion, for the reason you're hearing so much about taking it out now, is simply there's been quite a bit of staff turnover over the years, and there hasn't been that institutional experience in understanding how the Boards and Commission work together to make this work effectively. So I'll be voting no on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hallman, and then Mr. Lewicki.
Aram Hallman, Precinct 6. I appreciate what Mr. Benson said about making sure that no protections will be diminished. In many ways, I like this proposal. I am concerned about something on it, and I'm wondering if I could ask a question of either Mr. Benson or somebody else qualified to answer?
Of course. Your question?
Okay. In what is being proposed to eliminate the inland-wetland district, there's words to the effect that land along perennial rivers, brooks, et cetera, are protected for a horizontal distance of 200 feet from the center line. Is there any flexibility in that 200 feet?
Mr. Benson, or Mr. Revellak? Okay, to the microphone, please.
In what is proposed to be eliminated, is there any flexibility in that 200-foot distance?
Well, we're proposing to eliminate it. The town wetland bylaw retains the 200-foot distance, so that's where one would look, if there was any question.
I understand that that's what you're proposing to eliminate, but when I look in the section of Article 8, Wetlands Protection, I just want to quote from that. "The Commission there may require that the applicant maintain a strip of continuous, undisturbed vegetative cover within the 200-foot riverfront area." So is that the same 200 feet?
Yes.
Okay. The difference that I notice is one particular word, and I want to emphasize it. "The Commission," that is, "the Conservation Commission," therefore "may," emphasis, "may" require that the applicant maintain such a strip. And I'm reading that to mean it is at the discretion of the Commission whether or not to do that within 200 feet. Now, I understand that the state law requires 100 feet of protection, no matter what. Arlington, in its wisdom, in both of these provisions, for the ARB, and, excuse me, the Zoning Board of Appeals, and for the Conservation Commission, extended that to 200 feet. The difference is that in the new wording that you are proposing, there is an element of discretion in enforcing that. I do not see that element of discretion in what is being proposed to eliminate. Am I correct in interpreting that?
You know, I don't know the answer to that, Mr. Hallman, because, to my knowledge, the ARB has never implemented this, and the Zoning Board of Appeals has never implemented it, because it's so confusing about how to do it. Both Boards have generally deferred to the Conservation Commission. During my seven years on the Redevelopment Board, it has never come up.
I understand that, but at the same time, you said you had taken great care to make sure that there would be no diminishment of any conservation protections. And as I'm reading it, I am seeing in what you're proposing to delete, an absolute requirement for 200 feet, whereas in the new wording, I'm seeing a discretionary requirement of 200 feet. And I guess I'm interpreting that as exactly the kind of diminishment that concerns me.
I can't give you a definitive answer without reading the Conservation Commission bylaw. I can just, again, tell you that it has never come up at the Redevelopment Board, or, to my knowledge, in speaking with the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals, with the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay.
So we have a difference in interpretation?
It's a matter of interpretation. At this point, I'm not fully convinced that there will be no diminishment of conservation protection. And I think by switching from one jurisdiction by one regulating board to another, you are giving the Conservation Commission the discretion to enforce this for 200 feet, whereas in what should be deleted, in what is proposed to be deleted now, that discretion is not there. So at this point, I think until that discrepancy can be resolved, I would urge you to vote against this. One possibility, and I realize we are not amending the Conservation Commission regulations right now, would be to change the Conservation Commission regulations to eliminate that word "may" and put in the word "shall." And therefore, we would have the definitive, unconditional, unambiguous, 200-foot protection that is in the regulations proposed to be eliminated. So I will be voting no on this, and urge you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hallman, speaking time is up, so we're going to move on. Mr. Lewicki, and then Mr. Jasper.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. J. Lewicki, Precinct 2. I move to terminate debate.
Okay, we have a motion to terminate debate, and we have a second. All those in favor of terminating debate under Article 28, say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed, say no.
No!
Debate is not terminated. Well, we're in the middle of a vote here, so the vote is challenged, and we'll do an electronic vote on termination of debate. So when the green light is on, and it is now on, vote 1 if you want to terminate debate under Article 28, and vote 2 for no, to continue debate, and 3 to abstain. Okay, let's close voting. And debate is terminated. 152 in the affirmative, 57 negative. And is that 2/3s? So we'll now move to a vote on the main motion under Article 28. Voting is now open. So vote. This is a, sorry, this is a 2/3s vote to delete Section 5.8 inland-wetland overlay district and a reference to it from the zoning bylaw. If you're in favor of that change, vote 1 for yes. If you're against that change, you're opposed, vote 2 for no, and 3 to abstain. Okay, let's close voting. And this is a 2/3s vote. And it fails. 135 in the affirmative, 78 in the negative. That brings us to Article 29. That brings us to Article 29. We have a motion to adjourn, and we have a second. All those in favor, before we take that, any, any notices of reconsideration for tonight?
Point of order?
No, pass? Okay. Ms. Deschler?
Christine Deschler, Chair of the Arlington Finance Committee. Having voted on the prevailing side, I give notice of reconsideration on Article 45.
On 45. Noted. Okay, and we had a motion to adjourn and a second, so all those in favor of adjourning say yes?
Yes!
All those opposed say no?
No!
We are adjourned until Monday, which is budget night.